Hello, everybody. Welcome back to Bridging the Gap. My name is Colin McEvers.
I'm David James.
I'm Jer Michael Mitchell.
I'm Michael Langford.
Today, we have a Talk of the City segment. This is Chopping It Up. We have some guests that are very knowledgeable about city matters. And yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
And while we're actually talking about our guests, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself here? Michael, you're the new guy on the scene here.
Sure. I'm an artist. You know, personally, that's how I'm relating to life in that role. I am a community arts advocate. I host community events in my home, out in the community at different organizations like The Brick Room or the Public Library. And yeah, I'm just a generally concerned citizen getting involved in the local scene.
You're gonna have to teach him how to play the guitar a little bit.
I can do that, man.
I need to learn something new. Jer Michael?
Well, of course, I'm Jer Michael Mitchell. I consider myself a youth and community activist.
Okay, okay. You're very impactful in the community, too.
Definitely, definitely. So the first question we have for both of you guys, for Jer Michael and Michael, what do you guys see as the top concerns of the city of Salisbury at this current moment?
Yeah, good question.
I would say transparency. Michael probably echoed the same. We talk often a lot. But I would say transparency. Everybody ran that they were going to be transparent when they did their campaigns. It was a key thing, a very big topic. And now, I would say, when you see the hands unfolding, you find out a lot more was going on and a lot is going on that we haven't heard or that we didn't know. So when you're paying attention, close attention, I don't think we're as transparent as we talked about in the very beginning when their campaigns were ran and when these people were elected in their positions.
Empty promises.
And the facts.
Yeah, no, I have to agree with Jer Michael. I'd say like, for example, of how they could be more transparent, when the agenda meeting packets are going out are last minute, sometimes items are added last minute to that agenda, so people don't have proper time to review them. So communication on the front end, then the meeting minutes are often late and behind. And they're working to remedy that, but at the same time, isn't that the role of like a city clerk? Isn't that the role of that job? So what else are they doing other than putting, doing exactly what that clerical position is for? And then during the meeting, it's amazing, they don't really provide a lot of, they don't have like the agenda meeting packet there, right? They might have like a list of what's gonna come up.
Good point.
But that like, when they're going over, at the most recent city council meeting when I was there, they were talking about amending a line item, and it's like the difference of like numbers. And so they don't have that in front of you, they're reading it. So unless you're a certain kind of savvy numbers person, most human beings are not going to be able to do 1.432 to amended to 1.4. We can't follow that, you know?
Right, right, exactly.
So while they're speaking something into the public realm, it's disingenuous to pretend like people are gonna be able to follow or be able to be involved or in real time respond to that. So I think there's a lack of transparency and we could really alter that in how council meetings are done.
I would also add, and I would like to add because he brought that up, the fact that sometimes the lingo goes over people's heads. And that is why what we talked about earlier, town halls are vital and important.
Very important.
Because in town halls, you can break down what's really being talked about, right? So like Michael said, you may not get it then because we don't have the timeframe, right? But in those town halls, I have all the time in the world to really explain what's really going on to people in my district. But we don't have town halls like that for my people.
Yeah, I actually didn't quite understand. The last council meeting, they had like, I think the line item was 2935, and you had two totally different things grouped into the same packet.
Yeah.
And I'm like, wait, wait, what are we voting on? Actually, I think one of the council ladies actually said, what are we voting on? The first part or the second part?
Exactly.
I didn't understand the rhyme or reason on why they did it like that.
Yeah, and you know, speaking of town halls, maybe if we had some kind of media specialist.
This is somebody who could set up town halls in each of our districts and make arrangements for that so that we can answer constituents face to face. Could we do that ourselves? Possibly, but at least three of us, at least...
Okay.
At least three of us.
Hold on, guys, one Gregory. To host town halls for the people.
Eighty-one thousand, eighty-one thousand, you know?
We'd be in a better position, but actually, I wanted to touch on something you had mentioned about amendments, certain things not being included on the agenda. You had mentioned this at the last city council meeting that we were both at. There was a proposal to add another role to the city government, a media specialist. And was it, what was it that you said that it wasn't necessarily stipulated or even stated on the city agenda?
Yeah, there's nothing for us to review. There was no specific, they didn't even label the position. They didn't give a description of the position. Like, there was no transparency there. So it was just something added last minute to the packet, but we as the public just coming into a meeting, we depend on that sheet of paper that they have that they had to be like the facts, just the facts. And, you know, for people to get involved in their political process, and we can't do that how they're conducting things in that chamber.
Well, I noticed also when they were talking about this, it didn't seem like the council president wanted to be confrontational about it, like maybe it wasn't really his bill. Wasn't, in other words, it seemed like there was two other people that were getting in detail about it, and soon as that, there was some kind of, I mean, people didn't like what they were hearing. He was like, well, we don't have to do this. We don't have to do this. So my question is, who really wanted this media specialist? And what would it actually be used for? I mean, you know, I mean, I like what April Jackson said about the fact that she does her own work. I've actually been able to go on Facebook and see she does a lot of work with the homeless. I know where to go. I know what's going on. So, and I think you showed me last night some TikTok by one of them on there.
Yes, actually.
I don't think that was very professional what she was doing, but, you know, so, yeah.
Mind you, I think this is the same, if you're speaking about the same person I'm thinking of, it was the same individual who said that the council people didn't necessarily have time to go on social media.
No, you gotta do TikTok, you gotta have time.
Precisely.
You're being emotional. It's understandable, but unnecessary.
And that's why I think this is a good idea, okay? Is to be able to do that, to be able to facilitate communication. That's something that I have tried to do, but I cannot keep up on social media all the time, and I don't have time for that.
Precisely, so that's unfortunate. But, um, yeah, so I think we've touched on this a little bit, actually, about what irritates all of us about the way that city council meetings are carried out. I know there's a lot of, you know, concerns about transparency, for instance. Is there anything else?
Yeah, my biggest piece again is just, you know, the time that they try to take away the time from people being able to speak publicly.
Bad part, yeah.
To sign in. If I'm a working man and I get off of work and I haven't had a break today, I didn't have an opportunity to sign up, but my voice still needs to be heard.
Sure.
You know, I'm actually a taxpaying citizen. Now, I'm busy paying taxes by working. So again, for you to tell me that I have to sign up by 12 o'clock the day of is madness, right? Like, what if I didn't have time? So you mean, when I still come to this meeting, my say doesn't matter? It shouldn't, it's not important what I feel or how I feel what's going on? That's just, that was crazy to me. So a lot of times, people try to control the narrative, right? And that, to me, is crazy because that's not political. The political part is listening to the people, right? And a lot of times, when you're trying to control the narrative, you can't listen to people. So it takes away our power, which is our voice. And a lot of times, that's just, that's an issue for me.
And you know, also, to just add on to that, at the last meeting, I actually heard the council president make the comment that after somebody chuckled at a comment that was made, he was just like, look, you know, I don't mind giving you more time. So wait a minute. So sometimes we have a time limit, and rather than not, you're okay with who's the person in charge up there, you get more time. I don't quite understand. At least I do know when you go to the county meetings, it's three minutes regardless. It's rather, well, it should be three minutes, I mean, but you know.
Are you saying there might be some favoritism there?
I plead the fifth.
So I think I'd summarize your point along with transparency, consistency. The way that things are done should be in a consistent, predictable manners that people can depend and gain trust in the government. But when you start changing things at last minute, making signups at noon, reducing the time, at one point, you could talk for five minutes, now it's three. They've reduced it for a couple of meetings down to two minutes, now it's back to three. And it's like, well, when you start changing things like that superflusely, like needlessly, capriciously, you know, people end up losing faith, losing trust, being discouraged because they came prepared for every other meeting you have, you know, before that was maybe three minutes. So they prepared very thoughtfully their comments, their contribution, but it timed out at 2:37. When they practiced it, now they can't say everything they came to say.
They call it audible. That's what they called it in football. That's good. Actually, I want to ask also this. I don't know if y'all have noticed on Facebook, there's a group out called Recall Randy, where they want to get rid of the mayor. How do y'all feel about that?
Well, we had this conversation the first time I was on Bridging the Gap, when we came to the county executive, and they were trying to get rid of that position. But I don't, that's not the political process. The mayor has been voted in. He has a vision for the city. We have to allow his time period, which is four years, to go through. Then we have to evaluate and decide whether we want to vote him back in the process. It pisses me off, to be honest, when you start taking, talking about things that have been in place for so long, and now you want to change that because it doesn't sit well with someone. Or the person in that position, right, isn't doing what you want them to do, so now we no longer need that position. It's just, it's diabolical to me, right? There's a checks and balances in place for a purpose. So now you're talking about removing a part of the checks and balances, which is crazy because that's always been a democratic process. There's always been the checks and balances. When you talk about removing the mayor, or you talk about recanning his votes or all of these things, all of a sudden now, because he decides to go have a drink, or he decides to go to a public place and be a human. He's human. Yeah, he can do these things, right? So now you're talking about, oh, well, we, because he's here and he's doing this, he no longer needs to be the mayor. Well, that's crazy. Isn't he a human being? He's allowed to go do whatever he wants. How he chooses to relieve his stress is his business. You shouldn't be chasing him around. You shouldn't be following him. Shouldn't be, where's Randy Page is, or all these political schemes to remove someone or make someone look belittled, right? Sit down and have a professional conversation with the gentleman. Speak your piece, see what he thinks about that, and then get to know him for yourself instead of going by what other people are saying about him or what other people portray on social media about him, right? Like, he was voted in the position. Let him do the work.
Everybody has an idea in their head of how they, what they want to see or how they think things should go, whatever context we're talking about for that. When it comes to like the political, I think a lot of times, we should be judging people the way that they themselves would be judged. So basically, we should be judging Mayor Taylor by his performance of what he said he would do, not what we as individuals believe that someone in that role should be doing. We're all gonna have that opinion, too. But in order to really get something done, to be able to sit down and have a conversation with the man, you have to be willing to, one, hear him out. I think, I think that, too, as far as like why he, like, I found him willing to answer my questions. When I've reached out to Randy, why are you doing this? I may not like the response all the time. I may not always agree, but that's not actually an issue for me because I live in the real world where we can still work with people, collaborate, create together, you know, despite differences. I mean, and I thought, and it's wild work to me to see people who preach on like the gospel of diversity, for instance, or like inclusion, and then there's just no room at the table, there's no room in the end for like certain people because they don't fit the narrative.
They don't fit the narrative. And I would also add, I can honestly say that Randy Taylor has not gone against anything that he said in his campaign compared to others who were on the council, who have, again, not done the things that they campaigned on. So again, we're mad at someone for doing exactly what he said he was gonna do. Hasn't gone against the grain yet, that I know of.
Right.
And then the people who have gone against the grain are the ones that people are still supporting and people are still cheering for, and people are still 100% behind. That's an oxymoron to me. That man has done exactly what he campaigned on, and to me, I like it. He's upfront. He's been upfront this whole time, and he's been an honest person.
Yeah, and the people obviously voted for him. They voted for that. They voted for that agenda, for that platform.
Exactly.
I personally think the whole Recall Randy effort is childish. I think it's very, very obviously motivated by personal grievance with the man himself. I mean, you know, if you have a problem, like everyone's been saying, if you have a problem with someone, you might, it might be better to have a conversation, sit down, talk, hear him out, bring some other things to the table as opposed to just starting some kind of anonymous, it's an anonymous campaign to recall the mayor. I mean, at the very least, come out and say that you want to do it. Don't make it anonymous. I mean, I've heard rumors in the city area that the person leading this whole campaign is the leader of Shore Progress and his girlfriend.
But we're not sure.
We're not sure about that, that's why. It's rumors. It's unsubstantiated. But I mean, I just, you know, I personally think, you know, I've looked through the Facebook page, I've looked through the effort, I've seen all the things. It really just seems like they're trying to copy that no more more Facebook page, actually. It looks like they're just trying to copy it. And I don't think it's, I have no confidence that it's going to succeed whatsoever. I mean, they'd have to get, what, like 30% of the entire Salisbury city population to vote to recall him? I mean, he hasn't done anything terrible.
I think, I think it was actually two thirds, or something, two thirds of registered voters. And so the registered, not new votes, that's a part. It's out of registered voters. So they're going around being like, only 3,000 people about voted, so they're thinking they need like two thirds of that. No, 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 no. You need like 12,000 signatures. These people don't even show up for the polls. And they have 90 days to do it.
Wow.
So there's a time limit on them getting 12,000 signatures. I would love to see them get that petition because they would have worked harder to get that petition than they did on these campaigns or how they do in the community. I would love to see them actually work. It would impress me. I'd be like, so what else are you gonna do with this energy and this effort and this ability?
But I would like to comment on what Colin said as well. Don't hide behind the smear campaign, right? Be upfront about it. If you feel a way, he's made you feel a way, and you feel like he needs to be recalled, that's understandable. But be men and women about how you feel and show face. Don't hide behind fake pages. Don't do these things. Show who you are so we know who you are, right? That's the biggest piece for me. Like, I hate people who hide behind things. Running against, running my campaign, there were some things that Shore Progressive did at the time that, to me, felt belittling, you know, being left off of things and all of these other tactics that they use. So I wouldn't be surprised if they were behind it because these tactics have been used before in political gain or tried to have political gain in the process. But when you're running smear campaigns and things like that, to me, it's cowardly, especially when you're hiding.
I was just about to say that, just.
You gotta show your hand.
You know, it's unique that I was just thinking when he was, I mean, we were talking about this, this Recall Randy. I also saw on some posts on Facebook that they were saying the reason why Mayor Taylor is the mayor is because there were three people in that race, which you think you were there from day one, right?
Yeah, man, I had to defend that a couple of times, and I don't say much. I try my best.
Maybe they want to call it blame Jer Michael instead of...
Yeah, and it kept me in love. Stupid Democrats, the Democrats running two candidates. Well, people, I decided to run against Jack Heath. We all, people always have to keep forgetting that. I was running against Jack Heath. Meghan was pointed to, because she at the time was running for county, city council again. She was running for her seat again in city council. So again, I believe Meghan was picked. She fit the bill. She comes from a political family. She has a political science degree. She fit the bill. And a lot of times, people feel like you can plant someone somewhere and they can be more successful.
Interesting.
Definitely. And I'll say that, I feel like, they say that, oh, you split the vote between the Democrats. I'm pretty sure that there would be a lot of conservatives who had voted for you, who did vote for you as well. Like, I wasn't a Salisbury city resident at the time. I was, you know, only a couple of months at Salisbury University. But when I, after watching that mayoral forum, I wasn't necessarily sold on Meghan. I also wasn't necessarily sold on Randy. I would have voted for you, but also, there were other people in my college, like, I had this editor in chief of our newspaper who was also liberal, who I think interviewed him. His name was Liam Ginnis, actually.
Yeah, that's my man.
And, you know, and he wanted to vote for you. I think he may have, actually. I think he did. So like, you know, it's not like, oh, just a bunch of liberals would have voted, you would have, you split the vote. It could have gone either ways, really. I mean, seriously.
Funny you bring him up because he came to one of my town halls.
Oh, yeah?
And that's where he interviewed me at, man, and we had such a great conversation. And he was able to see me interact with other people because that's actually the day we met with P Flag. And he came to interview me right before that.
Wow, that's awesome. That's really cool.
So speaking of town halls, we were also talking before we went on the air that there's a lack of that happening. As a matter of fact, I would say within local government or local politics, including the county, there's only maybe about two or three council people that are actually holding these town halls. I can say the executive has one, and actually, tomorrow night, we have Mayor Taylor at actually a, I guess he says, what do you call it, a state of the city address. But do y'all think that a lot of people ran on these town halls, but there's a lack of that happening?
Yes. Everyone ran on town halls in transparency because that was where the transparency was supposed to happen. And we talked about it. It was big. We brought it up in the campaign because, again, we feel like if you're sitting in these seats politically, the people who vote you in, you have to listen to them.
Absolutely.
Well, the only time you're ever gonna have the opportunity to listen to them, of course, isn't at a council, city council meeting or a county council meeting. You have to have the town halls to truly hear people out. Because again, I really may not be able to say what I need to say in three minutes. I may need more of your time than three minutes. And in these type of forums, these people get a longer time period. And you can come up with some solutions, right? I can tell you the truth, right, because a lot of things go off votes. If I don't get other council people to sway my way, we'll never get things done in our district, right? So it's very vital that you understand that. Yeah, I can listen to your complaint all day long, but I also have to persuade my constituents to vote for something that you need in this county, in this district. Because if I don't do that, then hey, it gets to put on the agenda, but it's just a talking topic. And now you think I'm not good at my job, and you vote against me next time because, again, you feel like you're not being heard, right? But a lot of times, man, they don't, I personally feel a lot of people have their own political agenda.
Yeah, integrity is, integrity seems to be something that politicians lack. I'm not saying elected leaders. You can be an elected leader and not be a politician. A lot of people don't know that, though.
Yes.
Now, I wanted to go over some of the chopping up questions because we definitely want to keep this in a decent of a timeframe here. As we do with Chopping It Up, we actually tried to give grades for different points of what's going on. And Colin, you want to do the first one?
Yes, all right. So Chopping It Up questions for today.
First one.
The first one is, drum roll, please. Best and worst council person on the city council and why, and everyone. And David came up with this one, okay? So don't blame me, all right?
So let me, I gotta go first?
You can go first, yeah.
Oh, goodie. I was joking on that going first thing. Well, I will give my, the best, then I'll give the worst one I see up there, and then I'll talk about one in the middle, okay? The best one I see up there is truthfully, the one that it seems to be one to see something happen in the right way would be April Jackson, okay? I feel that she's connected with her community. She's connected with her district. She spends a lot of time out there and, you know, a lot of politicians, majority of politicians ignore the homeless because they don't vote. That's not what April does. So I've got to give her a big thumbs up, you know? And I see her standing up against the other ones when it comes to certain things that she sees as like no brainers, like with this whole media, I mean, specialists. She does all her own work. You can go on April Jackson's page. You can see what's going on. No, she may not have the PAC-14 quality, but she gets the point across. Now, as far as the worst on there, and again, I'm not saying that person's a bad person, but I don't see them doing anything positive. It's kind of a, I ain't gonna lie to you, it's kind of two of them. So I'm gonna say it's a tie between Angela Blake and Michelle Gregory. Reason why I'm gonna say this is, I haven't seen them do anything positive. I've seen them argue. I've seen them be pretty much this, whatever the mayor's saying, try to get a little louder than he is. I just haven't seen anything positive happening. I've actually know there's a person that has another show here about PAC-14 and had one of them actually go on their TikTok page and make fun of their child. So I can't say that's something becoming of a leader at all. Now, the one that, and I've talked to my buddies here about this, one I'm kind of concerned with, I just think that he may be a whole lot over his head, would be DeShawn Daugherty. I believe that the young man went in there with the right intentions, but he started listening to the wrong voices, maybe those two that I just named.
Mr. Daugherty, you could do a good job if you don't allow everybody else to tell you what to do, okay? I don't know if it's the former mayor or other council people, but think for yourself, take it from today on, and you can be somebody, I promise you. Council president Daugherty, listen to her more. I don't know who all across the bridge is talking to you, brother, but they're not backing you up when you're getting bombarded by everybody else. I'm praying for you, though, okay? Seriously. Thank you, everyone.
And I really think that if he's going to get back on track, he needs to start like yesterday and start making decisions for himself and stop buying all that swag on the city's card. That's not good, man. You get a paycheck for that, okay?
There'll be a Salisbury Independent article coming about that soon.
Good advertisement there.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
All right, so who else want to give them? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll give a little bit of a rating, okay? I think, I'm actually gonna have to agree with David on the first point. I think that April, and I've only been to a couple, it's been only a couple of weeks that I've been going to city council meetings. But from all the people I've seen, I think April Jackson has been the biggest fighter for, you know, common sense, for, you know, policies that are actually in the best interest of Salisbury residents. I haven't been to any of her town halls, but I hear that she hosts them and that she actually is transparent with her constituents. She does them herself. She doesn't, you know, at the last council meeting when she kind of, she, I think she was one of the first people that kind of articulated a stance against the media specialist thing and kind of just told the other people, well, we can do social media on our own. We can do town councils, city councils on our own, things like that. So I definitely think that she is the best one on there. Now, for the second one, you know, I don't want to be rude or ignorant to anyone, you know, that's not my intention or whatever. I'd have to say, in regards to worst job, I'm gonna have to say DeShawn Daugherty. And the main reason I'm saying that is because he is the president of the council. He's the leader. He's the one that's supposed to be leading it in a positive, in a, you know, good direction. And it just doesn't seem to be proceeding in a good direction at all, from what I've seen, from what I've heard from people. It seems like there is a considerable lack of transparency, which, you know, everyone on this panel right now has been talking about today. And that has to be attributed to the leadership at the end of the day. There's been a lot of contention between the city government leadership and city, you know, administration between Randy Taylor and the city council president. I think that's also attributed to, attributable to DeShawn. David here, I know you were saying that you think that there's a little bit of puppeteering going on in regards to...
A lot of puppeteering.
A lot of puppeteering. I, it's possible, but I think that a lot of the decisions that he's making are on his own behest and, you know, kind of decision-making, whatever it might be. So that's my opinion for the best and the worst from what I've seen so far. Who'd like to go next?
My open go.
Okay. So, yeah, we're echoing a lot of sentiments. So my best is April Jackson because whether you like what she's saying or not, you know what her thoughts are on the thing. She is communicating with people. She is connected, like you said, to the community. And she's, you know, I feel like that's the, again, it's not about whether or not you always agree with the person. It's about whether or not they're doing what they said they would do, right?
Sure.
And so judging her by that metric, I feel like, you know, being someone who's paid attention closely for a couple of years, but, you know, just generally have had my ear to the ground for 10 years, looking at people in the city. April's there. April's in the community, like, it's undeniable. My worst, probably echoing your sentiments, Colin, DeShawn, because, I mean, I think that, I think inexperience leads to a certain level of incompetence. And then when people are insecure and they overcompensate for that, then it leads to kind of the contention with the mayor, which there shouldn't be any of that. Especially, one of the things that's so hard, if you look at the pay, council is part-time. It is wild to me that like these people are overstepping their bounds in the way that they're supposed to represent and serve. They're part-time. Randy's full-time. The mayor is full-time. This is a person who's essential, right, to the operation of the city. The council, you people are literally expendable. It can be anybody else in those seats, like, and you're part-time. You're not required in order to get the trash picked up proverbially. If I see something that's broken in my neighborhood when I'm walking, DeShawn is not the person that I contact if I want to get something done about it. It would be the mayor, it'd be Randy, right? And as far as my personal experiences of correspondence, it's like I'm getting a lot more. DeShawn has sat down with me, to his credit, but nothing much came out of that. I felt like it was very much a handshake and a nod, but it didn't lead to anything. Yeah, right, the conversation, especially when talking points, people don't mean what they say. Things are just, you know, plemical points that politicians make. You know, I think that's the issue. So I think that he, you know, that, along with his ambition, coupled to make a really toxic potential situation where he is overstepping his bounds frequently with that role and trying to see how far we can take that, but it's a part-time position.
That's a good point. Great point. Great point.
So echo, April, get a four out of four here. Again, for campaigning on standing on business, April would be that. She goes in the community. She has projects. She does not, you know, the nonprofit work sector. She does the for the homeless, for the youth, for the elderly for Christmas. So I know of the work that she definitely puts in, boots on the ground in her community to make things happen. So she's not just sitting at the council meetings, talking. She goes out and puts in the work and does the actions behind it, and always has. I have to give her that credit. I think, I won't continue to down DeShawn because he's gotten beat up enough, but I could echo the same things and sentiments. But I'm gonna choose someone different just because he's already been knocked twice. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna choose Angela Blake. I think at times, she's quiet and she doesn't do enough in her community as far as being seen when it comes to all constituents. You know, you can't, you have to make sure that representation is key. And sometimes we allow people to slide through the cracks just because they are quiet. But when you campaign on certain things, you have to stick to the campaign. You have to do what you said you were gonna do. And I can't say that I see many of them out in the community, because I'm out in the community. So, but I don't see them in their districts doing the work, right? Yeah, you might be a phone call away if there's a problem, but what are you going out in your district being proactive for? You can't always just be reactive. You can't always just be reactive in those positions. You have to be a proactive person. So getting feet in your community, knocking on doors when it's not just election time to find out if people are okay. Is everything alright in your community? What's going on with your landlord? These things aren't done by several people. Um, but I just don't want some to, you know, fall through the cracks and not be spoken about today.
Right, I've actually seen where when one of them shows up, the other one does. When Michelle Gregory shows up to something, so does Angela Blake. Now, the question is what they show up to? You know, is it a photo op? You know, I remember we were talking earlier, the only one that should be, I mean, going at the photo op should be who?
Mister Taylor.
Mister Taylor.
He's the, he's the figurehead of the city.
Exactly, full time.
Other people who have craved power for their position, um, show up and they are presenting things that the mayor should be presenting and they're saying speeches that the mayor should be saying and getting time and things of that nature. I've seen it a couple of times at events that I've been to. Um, one time they even brought Jake Day back to be the speaker. We have a mayor, not the former mayor. We don't need the former mayor to be the speaker when we have a mayor.
It's in Maris County.
Yeah, yeah, you get what I'm saying. So it's like one of those things where, you know, I I was blown away that Mayor Taylor wasn't the first to give a speech, even if we're gonna bring back the former mayor. Mayor Taylor should speak first. He's our current mayor. So no one should speak before he speaks. Um, so you know.
You know, and I did say a few seconds ago, it kind of merits the county. I think that, I mean, just my thought. I think if you didn't call the council leader, the president, on either level, you wouldn't have much problems. Maybe like, like in Congress, what do you have? The Speaker of the House?
Right.
You know what I mean? Because when you have someone, like you have an executive, you have a mayor, then you call someone else in the legislative part, the president. It sets the wrong thought because they're actually in charge of everybody else of a group. So I'm wondering, and that's one of the things that my concern is, is should they rename the, or call them maybe the Speaker of the Council?
That's, I like that idea though.
You know, I mean.
True, true to the the role and the duties of that position.
Exactly. It's all mindset.
Yeah, it's not actually, he's not the president, like he's not the president, like our, the president of the country is our president. He's not an executive.
Exactly. Now, so now, um, before we, cause I know we definitely wanna try to keep it, um, as we know, Jermichael actually has to be at a um, event a little bit, right?
Yeah, so we have a meeting for uh, a grant that we uh, put out in the community and it's several nonprofits who have received the grant. Um, so this Saturday, um, they'll be doing an event downtown to uh, display those nonprofits.
We're gonna go through the five council members on the city and we're just gonna go real quickly and give them a grade. We're gonna start with.
Okay, yeah, I'll start. Uh, Sharon DeShiel.
Sharon DeShiel.
Don't really know too much.
She's the one Republican on the whole group.
I'll I'll give her like a B because I don't really know too much about her, what she does. Michelle Gregory. I will give Michelle a D minus. April Jackson, I will give a A plus. DeShawn Doughty, I will give a D minus as well. Angela Blake, I will also give a D minus.
Okay, so there you go. So there's your five. What do you think?
Alright, Sharon, um, I would give a B. Um, I think Michelle Gregory, um, yeah, I'm I'm very similar to you. I'm like, uh, I'm I'm feeling that Michelle, Michelle, I'm not really quite, she's been there a very long time without making contribution. I'd say honestly, an E. I mean, I don't know what community endeavors she's led up or spearheaded. And she's been there long enough to make that, make a difference. April, I'd give it A. Um, we we went over why. DeShawn, super ambitious. I'm gonna give him an E. I mean, I just think it's terrible precedent. I think that inexperience is really costing us the public. And Angela, um, I actually live in District Five. There's never been anything for District Five and the people i- i- in there. It's a lot of apartment complexes. Right? In that, in my district. And there's just a lot of underrepresented, underserved people in my district. Um, so her, again, she's been there long enough. Um, a lot of these people were appointed, by the way. If you look up their history and how they initially got, they were not initially elected to those positions. They were appointed.
Wow.
Because of the vacancy and then they had like an incumbent advantage when election time came. So people were more, uh, DeShawn is that way. Angela was that way. Um, I'm not sure about Gregory. But that that's a, that's a typical maneuver. So yeah, I would sa- I would say that a lot of those people are doing really terrible. The people have been.
So you gave Angela a what?
E.
An E?
Yeah.
But this is even worse than our last one for the city also. Okay, so I'm I'm gonna go ahead and first with Sharon DeShiel. We got a chance to talk to her on the elevator. Um, I'm gonna be honest with you, at first I wasn't quite sure how I felt about her. I did hear her question some things at the last meeting, which was a big thumbs up. I'm gonna give her a C plus. I still need to see more. It's hard to get an A out of me, trust me. Um, Michelle Gregory, I'm gonna give her an E. I've never given anybody an E. Y'all give a Es out today, so I'm gonna go ahead and just give what I need to give her. My reason why is because, I mean, I haven't really seen anything except for who she's lobbying for. The question is, has she done anything for the whole city or has it just been for a certain uh, group? April Jackson, again, I'm gonna give her a B. And the only reason, I mean, like I said, I don't give everybody an A because we all have room for, I mean, growth. But one thing I have to say about April is she's out there. I'm gonna give her a B plus. You know, she's out there. She will listen. I'm not gonna say her and mayor always gets along. But at at least she will talk to him and work with him, but not just say, eh, off with his head. DeShawn, I'm gonna give him, I'm gonna give him a D plus. And that was a D plus. I'm gonna tell you why. I still think the young man hasn't got bad leadership as far as people have been talking to him and encouraging him and saying, you're doing a great job. And really, he needs to start from day one and build a reputation or a build a, yeah, a a reputation on being himself. And not being a figurehead that's being pushed around by other people. So he gets a D plus. Angela Blake, well, E. I mean, I'm just gonna say, I've I've heard her be disrespectful towards the mayor. I heard her even get smart with a couple of people out there in the um, audience. Um, I know some of the constituents in her area, I had not heard anything positive about her and it's probably means she'll never come a bridge in a gap, but um, actually, I've actually encouraged a couple of people, if they can, to run. You know, yes, I do try to encourage people and I think we have a good young man that's thinking about doing so. But I I'll I'll leave it up to him to say who he is because he might be up here now. Um, so those are, those are gonna be my grades. Um, Jermichael?
Uh, Sharon DeShiel gets a B from me. Um, she's been consistent with who she said she was. She doesn't get out in the community and do much. Um, but she has been consistent on her campaign. The things that she said she was gonna, were important to her. She's been consistent. She's been consistent in her vote. What she's voted upon and what she hasn't voted with. Um, she's been just just consistent. Like I said, consistency is key for me. Um, so I know who she is, if that makes sense. Through her vote and through her conversation, I know exactly who she is. Um, Michelle Gregory, again, um, for as long as she has been a part of the council, I can't specifically think of anything impactful that she's done for her community or her district. Um, again, I know the fight, um, with her having a son who, um, you know, has the issues that he has. She has fought for some handicap things before. Um, but while she's had that position of power, I can't think of anything impactful. So I'll also give her a a D minus. Uh, I won't, oh yeah, I won't go as bad as you guys with the Es. April Jackson, she'll get a B plus from me. Uh, I know that she puts in the work. Uh, everyone has run for growth. Um, but again, I I know she puts in the work. She's boots on the ground in our community. I know the things that she, and she stands up when she feels something isn't right. Um, and they didn't put Michael in a position that he should have been put in on one of the committees that no one wants to even sit in. Uh, she spoke up about that. Because it was more personal than it was political. Um, so those are things that she does speak up when she feels things are wrong. Uh, DeShawn Doughty, again, I I like DeShawn. He probably doesn't think I like him. Uh, but I like you, DeShawn. Uh, one of the key things though, again, is I feel like he's getting the wrong counsel. I told you who I think is in his ear. Um, and I know I've seen that blueprint before. Someone else became the first time, you know, first time on the council. When they came on the council, they were young. And when they were in the council, as soon as they got there, they were the president. Uh, then from there, they ran for other things later on. Uh, so I've seen the blueprint before and I just believe he has the wrong counsel in his ear. Could he do a lot better? Yes, he could. So I'll also give him a D minus. Um, and then, um, Angela Blake, again, same as Michelle. She's been on the council now for a while. I can't tell you anything impactful she's done in her community. Um, so she also gets a D minus from me as well.
Okay, okay. So for all those that watched our last chopping it up and y'all wondered why we gave them a such a low grade. Look, there are people on there that are doing things, doing things. April Jackson, as you've seen here, I think uh, collectively, we gave her pretty much a B plus, if not an A minus, you know? But the problem is it takes more than just one. I mean, on on a council of five people, you need at least three people to push things through. And I just don't see, I see literally, if you look at the uh, how the city counselors are all, um, they're all sitting there. That's just how they all vote. The two in the corner, they vote together. The one is in the middle, he's literally in the middle, but he's swaying that direction. And then the other two, when talking about April Jackson and Sharon DeShiel, they seem to stick together. So, you know. So that's what it seems like. Um, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I I I think it was a good review overall. Um, and uh, yeah, I think we can wrap it up and do a little outro.
This has been the chopping it up again. And again, like I said, we do this because we we're concerned about community. Each one of these young men up here right now, they're con- they're concerned about the community. There's some way, shape or form, we got people who are either either like bikers, like I like to, I mean, I like to walk. I like to ride my bike. You know, we like to, we're out and about. You've got the young man here is in college and he's gonna be the, he's part of the the change that's gonna happen. We got a young man here that should have been elected because he loves the community. So what we're doing now when we're getting here together is we're talking about what needs to go in a direction that's gonna be more community. So we do appreciate you all tuning into Bridging the Gap. Um, Jermichael, uh, Michael, do you have anything that, I got the Michaels here, Jermichael and Michael.
Uh, my biggest thing, man, is just for anyone out there, man, you know, uh, don't take these things personal. They're just our opinions and our opinions of others. Uh, but everybody has room for growth. So if you feel that you can do, we we all feel you can do more. So just step up to the plate and do more. That's the biggest piece.
I love that.
Yeah, um, I think it comes down to values, you know, how people serve. I think that's where you know, lack of that, lack of transparency, lack of integrity, lack of a a consistency. I think that's like the summary of our concerns. And so people might, I think the thing is, is that uh, I I really believe everybody can make a meaningful contribution, you know? And so like Jermichael said, I just wanna see more from some of these people. Um, I will say, I don't wanna miss this person out. Sharon DeShiel, I believe is instrumental in working with the hearts and hands, cold weather shelter. So she also helps with um, like the homeless community, which is uh, something also key and important.
Thank you for letting me know that.
Yeah, so I mean, she is definitely someone that's active and has spoken to that. So I I want us to be, you know, we're trying to be fair, but again, like Jermichael said, this is just all, you know, personal opinion. It's not really about that. We all just wanna see the best result for the community that we can get.
Absolutely.
Definitely, definitely. Well, thank you all for watching and uh, tune in for next episode.